Well, I want, I want the city man. All right, well. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission meeting this April 16, 2024. Thank you for being here tonight, and we have a lot of exciting things happening. The meeting has started. For those of you who are here for the first time, welcome, and we appreciate your attendance. We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we go into our presentations. Tonight, we are going to have five presentations, and presentations are normally where we recognize individuals, or organizations, or events that the city finds important to the community and which community members participate. So if I could begin the, uh, the meeting tonight by asking Jason Joseph and Ishmael Hul, Jason, who is a ninth grader at Dillard High, and Ishmael, who's an eighth grader at New River Middle School, please come to the podium here and join Commissioner Beasley-Pitman and myself in, uh, leading the pledge. Okay, here we go.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait, come back. I have a little gift for you. There you go. Don't want you to forget us. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Yes, you can take some photos.
Absolutely. You be well. You can take a picture. All right, very good. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Here.
Mayor Trentalis?
Here. Uh, and, uh, so I have a few agenda announcements to, uh, recite, but before we do that, uh, I want to thank the two gentlemen who, uh, helped us lead in the pledge, and now I'd like to ask the audience to please share with me a moment of silence. Thank you. We have two agenda announcements, uh, on the minutes on page 16 on February 6, 2024, regular minutes. It, the word should be north, the northeast was corrected to say northwest, and M2, correct commission district is District 2, not District 4. You're welcome. Uh, there's a walk-on presentation where Commissioner Herbst is going to be delivering one regarding Financial Literacy Month. So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended?
So moved, seconded.
But moved the seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the minutes and the agenda are now approved. Uh, so our first presentation is with Vice, the new, newly minted Vice Mayor Steve Glassman, who is going to present a proclamation regarding National Therapy Animal Day. And I can, can I please ask Aunt Mioli to please come forward from the Jack and Jill Children's Center? Hello, Ann.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, Ann, for being here. So we're going to take care of this, and then please, hopefully you'll say a few words for us. This is from the office of the mayor, City of Fort Lauderdale, proclamation in recognition of National Therapy Animal Day. Whereas, thousands of pet partners, therapy animal teams are diligently serving in communities across the United States. And whereas, scientific research provides evidence that interactions with therapy animals contribute significantly to reducing stress, alleviating depression, regulating heart rates, reducing blood pressure, and strengthening the immune system. And whereas, within the city of Fort Lauderdale, therapy animal teams play an indispensable role in improving human health and well-being through the bond we share with these animals. And whereas, therapy animal teams extend their support to a diverse array of individuals in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those nearing the end of their lives. And whereas, these remarkable therapy animals, alongside their human companions, provide solace and healing to those in distress. And whereas, it is incumbent upon us to encourage more pet owners to consider the possibility of becoming pet partners volunteers, thereby expanding access to enriching therapy animal visits within our community. Now, therefore, we, as city commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 30, 2024, as National Therapy Animal Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and dated this, the 16th day of April, 2024, and signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean J. Trentalis.
I'd like to say thank you. Um, I'm with Jack and Jill Center. We have two therapy dogs that work there. Um, it's a early education center and an elementary school, and the work that the therapy dogs do is just robust. The children love them. Um, we've seen a increase, an increase in reading, an increase in attendance. So I'm very thankful, Mayor, that you identified this, because this is really beneficial, to be able to support the work that the therapy animals do. So thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann, for being here tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now I'd like to invite Commissioner Beasley-Pitman to present a proclamation, uh, as Zeta Chi Chapter 70th Anniversary Day here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. So can the members of the Zeta Chi chapter please step forward? Handsome bunch.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I'd like for you to talk back to me. That's the, the minister in me. I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Um, my assignment tonight, I have the privilege of reading the proclamation that has been issued by the City of the Mayor of Fort Lauderdale in recognition of Zeta Chi Chapter 70th Anniversary. Whereas, the Zeta Chi Chapter of Omega Phi Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated was chaptered on April 26, 1954, in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, by seven distinguished Omega men, serving as a beacon of service and empowerment for the communities of Broward County. And whereas, the founding members established the Zeta Chi Chapter during the era marked by profound social challenges and racial disparities. And whereas, from its inception, the Zeta Chi Chapter has been dedicated to the advancement of civil rights, playing an active role in local and national movements for racial equality, including partner, partnering with the NAACP to combat racial discrimination and participating in protests to this manner of segregation practices. And whereas, despite facing challenges such as a decline in membership during the Vietnam War area and chartering of new chapters, the Zeta Chi Chapter remains steadfast in its commitment to show social justice and equality, continue to advocate for modularization communities both locally and nationally. And whereas, throughout the years, the Zeta Chi Chapter has demonstrated exemplary leadership with members serving in various roles in Broward County School Board, local government, um, justice, justice system, and other prominent organizations, making significant contributions to the legal profession, education, and community development. And whereas, the Zeta Chi Chapter has shown unwavering dedication to community service, forming partnerships with local organizations, including the Boys and Girls Club of Fort Lauderdale, to address critical issues that provide support to those in need. And as, and whereas, as the Zeta Chi Chapter celebrates its 70th anniversary, it continues to embody the principles of manhood, scholarship, and preservation, representing a legacy that will inspire future generations in the city of Fort Lauderdale and beyond. Now, therefore, we, as the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2024, as Zeta Chi Chapter 20th Anniversary Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale. And this is dated the 16th day of April, 2024, by Mayor Dean Trentalis.
You don't want to say anything? A few words?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, staff, it is indeed a pleasure to be here and receive this honor on behalf of the men of the Zeta Chi Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity. We're located right in the heart of the Sistrum Quarter, 1108 Northwest 6th Street. Uh, we've been doing this for 70 years, and we look to be doing this for 170 more. Um, we are a beacon of light in this community and in this county, and we want to partner more with the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County community, as well as those in surrounding areas. So thank you again for this honor, and we really take this, appreciate, and appreciate this. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I did notice that the Zeta Chi is the same age as the Vice Mayor, but, uh... Yeah, exactly. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm just gonna say, I want everybody to know who the Vice Mayor is. I'm no longer the Vice Mayor. I am not 70 years old.
Really? When was your birthday? Okay, now may I present Commissioner Sturman, who is going to, uh, provide to us a proclamation regarding Arbor Day here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. If I can invite Laura Tooley to come to the podium. Laura, our urban forester. How are you, Laura?
Come on over here. Okay. I'll, I'll read, okay, I'll read. You ready? Thank you. In recognition of Arbor Day, April 26, 2024, whereas, for over 150 years, Arbor Day has been observed throughout the United States, highlighting the importance of conservation efforts. And whereas, trees are responsible for creating a more sustainable environment by producing oxygen, cooling urban areas, and improving water quality, and reducing impacts of stormwater. And whereas, trees play a critical role in creating healthier, safer, and more connected communities. Trees provide shade and can cool our cities by up to 10 degrees, helping to prevent heat-related deaths in urban areas. And whereas, trees provide vital habitat for native and migratory birds, butterflies, and other wildlife. Recognizing this importance, the city of Fort Lauderdale has been a certified community wildlife habitat by the National Wildlife Federation. And whereas, the city of Fort Lauderdale has identified tree canopy coverage as a key sustainability metrics in its 1929 Press Play Strategic Plan, and aims to increase its tree canopy to 33% by 2040, as outlined in its Advanced Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan. And whereas, the city of Fort Lauderdale has initiated an urban forestry master planning effort in 2024 to engage neighbors and to guide and support the enhancement and preservation of the city's tree canopy. And whereas, these efforts have contributed to the city of Fort Lauderdale being recognized as a Tree City USA for 45 years by the Arbor Day Foundation, due to its longstanding active urban forestry program. And whereas, the city of Fort Lauderdale has committed in 2024 to participating in the Arbor Day Foundation's Energy Saving Tree Program. And whereas, this commitment aligns with the city of Fort Lauderdale's ongoing effort to further enhance and expand its tree canopy. Now, therefore, we, as the city of Fort Lauderdale and city commissioners, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and encourage all residents to observe Arbor Day by planting trees to preserve the well-being of our community. Signed, April 16, 2024, by our mayor, Dean Trentalis. Thank you. No more. Oh, my goodness. Okay, can we say a few words?
Laura, you want to say a few words?
Commissioner Sturman, Mayor, Commission, thank you so much for this proclamation. It means a lot to the city to, uh, honor trees every year. Uh, it shows a commitment by the commission to move forward and, uh, preserve the canopy we have, as well as, uh, plan for the urban forestry in the future. Uh, the Urban Forestry Master Plan that was mentioned in the proclamation, I'm really looking forward to reaching out to a lot of the community and getting their input, so that we can address concerns in each of the commissioners' districts appropriately. And thank you again.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Now I'd like to invite Commissioner Herbst, who's going to present a proclamation regarding Financial Literacy Month. I'd like to know if Casey DeLapena can please come to the podium.
So I'm proud to be able to do this. This is in recognition of National Financial Literacy Month. So as a, uh, and this is, this is for teaching youth about how to prepare to, to manage their money and deal with the financial world. So I'm a CPA, I'm a former stockbroker, I'm a former entrepreneur, and I love what Junior Achievement does. So, whereas, April is Financial Literacy Month, a time to recognize the importance of managing money wisely, particularly during difficult economic times. I hope everybody did their taxes. Uh, by preparing individuals with the skills to navigate financial challenges, we create opportunities for upward mobility and a brighter future for all. And whereas, personal financial education is essential for ensuring that the youth of Fort Lauderdale are prepared to manage their money and credit wisely and responsibly. And whereas, Junior Achievement of South Florida, celebrating its 65th anniversary in 2024, is the leading nonprofit organization that provides entrepreneurship, work readiness, and financial literacy education and programs to more than 80,000 kindergarten through 12th grade students each year. And whereas, founded locally by the Fort Lauderdale Rotary Club in 1959, Junior Achievement has grown from serving just 373 high school students in its first year to inspiring more than 1.1 million youth over the past 65 years. And whereas, through a unique partnership with Broward County Public Schools, more than 30,000 5th and 8th grade students participate in Junior Achievement's JA BizTown and JA Finance Park programs. These programs teach students about personal finance, career exploration, and workforce skills. Students learn how financial decisions impact their lives, the importance of saving and investing, and effective expense management. And whereas, students participating in JA BizTown and Finance Park programs engage in 18 hands-on classroom lessons that prepare them for immersive, real-life simulations. These simulations allow students to experience financial concepts and career scenarios firsthand, building skills they'll use throughout their lives. And whereas, Junior Achievement's Financial Literacy Education is also embedded into every Junior Achievement high school program. By empowering youth with the skills to manage, save, and invest their earnings wisely, we pave the way for them to avoid economic hardship and achieve lifelong financial independence. Now, therefore, we, as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National Financial Literacy Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and encourage all to get involved to advocate and empower our citizens, especially our youth, around the benefits of financial education. Dated the 16th day of April, 2024, by our Honorable Mayor Dean J. Trentalis.
Want to share a few words, Esther?
Just a few words, yeah.
Yeah.
That was a long one. Thank...
Longer than some, shorter than others.
Thank you, City of Fort Lauderdale, Mayor Trentalis, and esteemed commissioners, and Junior Achievement Board member Daphne Seanville, who's in the audience tonight, for your unwavering support of Junior Achievement of South Florida. Your commitment empowers every single 5th and 8th grade public school student in Fort Lauderdale and nearly 80,000 students annually across Broward and Southern Palm Beach Counties. Our program, which is mandated by Broward Schools, helps to create futures and build brighter communities, and we graciously thank all of you for your support. And for those of you in the audience who have not yet visited JA World in Coconut Creek, I invite you to please visit us to see the impact we create on a daily basis. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, now our last presentation, I would like to invite Heather Geronimus, who's Senior Director of Social Equity, Opportunity, and Impact, to join me, uh, at the podium regarding Walk Like Mad and Mad Dash Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Heather? So it's my honor, um, to be able to present this proclamation to Mothers Against Drunk Driving, MAD Broward, 2024, Walk Like Mad, and MAD Dash. Whereas, Walk Like Mad is the signature fundraising event of Mothers Against Drunk Driving, the nation's premier organization, working to end drunk and drugged driving, support victims of those, of these violent crimes, and to prevent underage drinking. Alarmingly, drunk driving crashes cause injury to every 79 seconds in the United States. This troubling trend continues, with a 31% increase in drunk driving deaths reported by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration between 2019 and 2021. MAD Broward, established in 1980, provides victim support services, community education, and youth programs that work to eliminate underage drinking throughout the South Florida community. On Sunday, April 28, 2024, MAD Southeast Florida will host the UKG and SALA Foundation Walk Like Mad and MAD Dash Fort Lauderdale 5K, presented by the Sheriff's Foundation of Broward County, to raise funds to support MAD's Broward, MAD Broward's youth programs, community education, and victim support services, helping to further MAD's mission. Finally, the mayor and city commissioners remind Fort Lauderdale residents that while, um, while driving while impaired is 100% preventable, and we urge everyone to make responsible decisions and take appropriate measures, such as designating a sober driver to prevent impaired driving. Now, therefore, we, as the city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Walk Like Mad and MAD Dash Month here in our city, and do encourage all citizens to participate in this very important event. Again, that's April 28. And Heather, you'll give us some more details on that. And to further urge citizens to make responsible decisions and take appropriate measures to prevent impaired driving. Dated the 16th day of April, 2024, signed by myself, Mayor Trentalis. Congratulations.
Mayor Trentalis, thank you so much for this. Great honor.
Starts at 7:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, could I? Mr. Mayor, could I say a word before they leave? Heather, I knew your dad. I worked with him in Florida Medical Center for many, many years. I loved your dad, awesome individual. I think the last time I saw you, you were this big. He'd be so proud of you like I am. Thank you for the work that you do. I am honored. Thank you so much. Thank you all for your patience and your interest. At this time, I would like to ask each member of the commission if they have any interest in pulling any item from the consent agenda. What happens there is that normally our consent agenda items are voted on all at once. If there's a, an item that anyone, any member of the commission wishes to pull and vote on separately, I'll ask for that at this time. And if there's anyone from the community that wants to speak on any of these consent agenda items, if it has been pulled, please wait for that item to be discussed. If it has not been pulled, we'll invite you to speak beforehand. So, at this point, Commissioner Herbst, do you have any items you wish to pull?
None.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None tonight.
Vice Mayor?
None, thank you.
And Commissioner Sturman?
I have three, lucky me.
Three?
Three. Some, just for discussion, some of them, but CR1.
CR1. C.
And CR5.
CR5?
CR4 and CR.
So, 1, 4, and 5?
Correct.
Okay. So, except for CR1, 4, and 5, do I hear motion to approve all the other consent agenda items?
Do you have any, Mr. Mayor, or not?
I'm sorry?
Any that you want or not? Do you have any you want to pull?
No.
Okay, just being courteous.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, did we move the seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. So, all those consent agenda items, other than the ones that were pulled, have now been approved. So, if you're here for that reason, you, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, otherwise your item has been approved. So, good luck, block test. Okay. Commissioner, CR1.
Okay, could I have, I guess we could start with, maybe Mr. Dunkel would be the right one to come up here, or for, has anybody?
Is Bob Dunkel here? Oh, my God.
Anybody signed up to speak about this? I don't, I'm not pulling it to oppose it, I just want more info and clarification for the community more than anything. So, don't, don't assume I'm against this project, I just want some clarity.
I know, it's newfangled. Just push the button.
There you go. Come on. Would you be the best?
Bob Dunkel, Assistant City Attorney.
Will you be the best one to speak on this, or somebody, or probably you know more about it than anybody?
I'm probably the best one to speak on this.
Okay, just a little heads up, so we know, you had explained this to me, but just to share it with the rest of my colleagues.
Bless you.
We've got two adjacent docks. One is 1342 Ponce de Leon, which is a through lot, so I think that's 915, but I'm going to refer to that as 1342. Immediately to the south is 919. The building department, when it issued the permit for the dock at 1342, made a mistake, and the dock was built farther south than what it should have been, which basically translated into 919 not being able to build their dock where it's supposed to be built. The resolution that would be adopted, if it's adopted tonight, for 919 is contingent. It's a, the effective date is when the noncompliant portion of the 1342 dock is demolished, and the city will be, will be doing the demolition. If you look at your, if you should look at your backup, we did something that we've not typically done, but there's an Exhibit C, which shows precisely what portion of the 1342 dock is noncompliant. And if you look at Page 7, Subparagraph 19, we outline exactly what is to be demolished. Does that answer your question?
Right, and just so, so for the benefit of my colleagues here, so 919 is the one that is, will be made whole after this, and they will be able to, this is allowing them to build the dock that they normally will be allowed to do.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, with that being said, could I move this item?
Would you like to introduce the resolution?
I would like to.
Okay, the introduction, introduction, it's been introduced. We want to get out of here tonight.
Mr. Dunkel, thank you. Mr. Dunkel, thank you very much for that. I appreciate it.
Okay, the resolution has been introduced. Please call the roll.
And Commissioner, that's for approving.
For approval, for approval.
Thank you. A resolution that the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursues to Section 8-144 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, granting a dock permit for installation, use, maintenance, and repair by applicants William S. Trethewey and Linda M. Trethewey, husband and wife of a proposed 63.4-foot-plus-or-minus-long-by-6-foot-plus-or-minus-wide-marginal-dock-and-access-steps-extending-a-maximum-distance-of-6-feet-plus-or-minus-from-the-outside-edge-of-the-seawall-cap, abutting the waterway adjacent to 19, or 919 Cordova Road, authorizing the proper city officials to countersign the Declaration of Covenants running with the land, respecting a city-issued dock permit authorizing recordation of this resolution and Declaration of Covenants by the applicant, subject to terms and conditions repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict here with and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and CR1 is now approved. CR4, this is a resolution supporting the advancement of the preferred alternative concept for the Southeast-Southwest 17th Street Mobility Hub Project. Commissioner Sturman?
Okay, I think that, I know that, Ted, you're going to want to speak in a few minutes, but just before you do, if I could have Ben Rogers come up, I think you'd be the best one to discuss this, is right, Ben?
Well, he is in charge of the department.
Correct. I know that MPO was, and the DOT, a few other partners were working on this. I've attended several of these workshops, actually a couple just in our office alone, and we've had, I think, a total of three public workshops. And there was some concern in the community, and it was also raised at my pre-agenda about trees. I'm going to give a quick summary, and then you can fill in the gaps where I might have made a mistake. This is in response to this, the county going to be having the commuter rail station right by Broward General. And in order to have that commuter rail station, they need to make improvements for anticipated incoming traffic, both vehicular as well as pedestrian and bicycle. And there's improvements that are made, sidewalks, bike lanes. The big concern that we've had, and we've had this before, and this was voiced by us and was also voiced at each one of our public meetings, was the removal of trees. I think there was several proposals, and we narrowed it down to three, and I think of the three, it was widely accepted that the proposal that kept the most amount of trees was the one that, that was picked, and that's the one that you're advancing here. The question is, they are going to be adding some sidewalks, I think, between 4th and 9th. And I've spoken to the presidents of the neighborhoods, the two neighborhoods involved, both Poincietta Park and Crescent Park, who are in favor of this. Their concern is two things, trees and, and the sidewalk. I believe there's portions of the sidewalk on the south side that aren't, that there's gaps, and this plan will fill in those gaps, but the problem is they do have to remove trees. So, the big question, number one, is I believe this is the, the plan that preserves the trees the most. And number two, would there be mitigation, the trees that are removed will be replaced? Those are the two questions that I have.
Yeah, so that's my understanding as well, Commissioner, that, that this is the option that's moving forward, is the preferred from the, from the neighborhoods. As for the, the planning and design phase, right, so right now what you're doing is approving the conceptual plan, and then they'll advance that to the design phase, where they'll address issues like conflicts with trees, utilities, and advance it to that phase. So, there'll still be some public outreach, there'll be, still be things, but this is approving the concept, so they can move to the next phase.
And you answered my another question, would, would there be opportunity for more public input as we go along? And the answer is yes, correct. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I think that there's some members in my community that didn't express a desire.
Did I complete your, your question?
That completes my thought, yes. Thank you, thank you, Ben. Thank you, Ben. Ted and Sarah has asked to speak on this.
Yeah, push the bottom, no, push the bottom of the mic. Yeah, you think I would know by now, huh? Okay, now, this, this is exactly my neighborhood. I mean, it starts at 9th Avenue and 19th, I mean, on 17th Street. I live on 9th Avenue and 19th Street. I drive, I ride this every single day, the entire distance, when I go to work in South Port Raubar, I mean, right up the, the entire way. You have it broken down into three areas. I, I firmly agree with three out of the four is fine. You got the, that train thing coming in, the commuter, that's fine, but I don't understand the part west of 4th Avenue, which is 100% residential area. It doesn't have anything to do with the commuter rail, anything. Now, here is the thing, on the north side of 17th Street, it is full sidewalk the entire distance. Now, on the south side, it is intermittent, but I went down there twice. Now, if you walk, now sidewalks are in straight lines, right, straight lines. If you start and walk straight, you are going to have to remove six oak trees, four generational oak trees, that I know of a family that has lived in this one house on 17th Street and 8th Avenue for four generations, that the original man, who knew my dad and Floyd Hall at Little Yankee Stadium, planted the trees, and now his great-grandson is living in the same house, and he can look out and say, my great-grandfather planted those trees. These are enormous, beautiful oak trees. I don't think y'all did the, the homework and actually walked straight, because sidewalks don't curve, so you're going to have the six oak trees, you're going to have five coconut palms, one beautiful Florida slash pine tree that's in the way. I measured 50 feet of shrubbery, it's all going to have to be taken out. Also, five of the homes, because their land has always gone to the street, always, five have paper, paperous driveways, so that they paid for, so you're going to have to rip up these driveways. Now, like I said, across the street is full sidewalk. That, that shouldn't be a problem. I don't understand why, you know, you just gave out in a proclamation, we're the Tree City of America, whatever they said, and now we're going to just rip out generational oak trees.
Okay, all right, so.
And three-fourths of this plan I like.
Okay, so, Commissioner, do you want to work on that?
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me say a couple of things, Ted. First of all, I did speak to, for Ray on Poincietta Park, that's not the area in, in concern, but I did speak to Pat. She walked it, she called me, we spoke again today. I think that it's going to be, some of the coconut palms are the big ones. I think some of the oaks you mentioned are not necessarily going to be removed. However, if I could have Ben just address some of that, I mean, whatever we could do to preserve the trees.
I have pictures.
If you could touch upon that, Ben, I mean, that is a concern of mine.
So, we're going to cut down trees to put a sidewalk in?
Yes.
Well, the problem you have is that this. For all the people that are not going to use the commuter rail?
Right, and then, now you have a sidewalk with no shade, because all the trees are gone, and right across the street is a full sidewalk.
Don't yell, he's right there.
But there are, when I gather, there are pieces of that sidewalk that are done, pieces that are missing, and they're filling in the gaps.
All right, well, what is Mr. Rogers have to say?
If you could, if you could address that.
Yes, I mean, I can.
Explain yourself.
No, 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 Ben, relax, Ben, relax.
I can, I can definitely speak with Mr. and Sarah about this offline and with staff to go through some things, but my understanding, to your point, Commissioner, is there's, there's multiple plans and kind of concepts that came forward. This one had the, the least number of impacts. There's a plan to relocate some of the trees, and there are some impacts that trees would have to be removed. I believe those ones are the ones that are in the median, not along the sidewalk, but I would, I would need to confer with staff to, to confirm that, but that's my understanding.
Okay, going forward.
There's no medium on 4th Avenue to 9th Avenue, it's a too-late little residential street.
Okay, well, going forward, if you could, I mean, work with, I mean, Pat is, we've spoken to her several times, and she's gone through some of these, if you could just keep that dialogue open, whatever we could do to preserve, I mean, obviously they're going to replant, but preserving whatever we can with trees, with the understanding that that's our priority.
Well, to be honest with you, Commissioner, I don't think we should approve this tonight until this is reworked. I don't think we should approve this.
Well, if you want to, if you want to.
I think we should.
I'd be fine with that. I will tell you two things.
We should defer it, because this is.
We've had about, we've had, I think, three or four community inputs, and we've gone through the whole thing, and we've, we have. We have, and, and the presidents in the neighborhoods have overwhelming support for this particular plan.
Well, you know, they're not going to build this, this commuter rail for, like, tomorrow, so we have plenty of time to, to do whatever improvements we, this is basically a, a walkway between federal highway and the proposed station, so we got, right?
Yeah, but we do have some time.
It would be a shame to take down one, one tree. It makes no sense for, just for, that we would, we would prefer a sidewalk over a canopy tree. I mean, this is, doesn't make any sense to me.
When you cross the street, it's full, all the way down from 4th Avenue to 9th Avenue is full sidewalk on the north side of 17th.
Do you have a map, could you show us a map?
Ted, did you go to those, all those meetings that they're putting? This is in the yellow area.
We're talking about the yellow area?
The yellow, so this is on Exhibit 3?
It's, it's, it's in the backup.
Okay, I, I was on Exhibit 2.
It's very hard to, to see where there are trees.
I know.
So, so far, we haven't seen any, so between Southwest.
Because it's a schematic, it doesn't show the trees.
Between Southwest 4th and, and the tracks, you can see there's none on the plans showing any kind of impacts.
How about Southwest 8?
That's fine, that's fine, I'm only concerned 9th Avenue to 4th Avenue, that's it.
So, can we see that section?
There's not a this great detail from 9th Avenue to 4th Avenue.
IT, can you please put Google Maps, and let's put Street View. Google Maps, Street View, Southwest 17th Street and 9th Avenue.
And 4th, 17th between 9th and 4th, Southwest.
I'm actually looking at it right now, and there is an, an oak tree on.
9th Avenue, that's not 17th.
Yeah, does it go to your right, please, IT?
9th Avenue, that's not 17th.
Yeah, does it go to your right, please, IT?
It's my neighborhood.
Okay.
So, which, is that, is that tree coming down on the left?
Go, go, there you go, okay.
Hang on a second. Is that tree coming down?
This, you're, you're going.
I'm sorry, go east.
Right?
Yeah, right there. Click there, no, go to the left.
That's, the shrubs would go right there, by.
Oh, that's just shrub, that's shrub. Okay, I'd like you to read that.
Okay.
One moment, please.
You brighten our day.
Once upon a time, we were Tree City.
David? David?
Welcome to 17th Street.
David, go ahead.
I know that guy on the bike.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. This is from Pat Rathburn.
That might be me.
This is from Pat Rathburn, is the president of Creysiden Park?
Yeah, Creysiden Park.
Neighborhood, correct. Okay, but what does Dear Pat have to say?
Creysiden Park Civic Association. The board has been consistent in selecting of the plan that is before you for approval tonight. There's been a lot of chatter on social media the last few days about removing trees. The whole purpose of the plan we selected was so that the trees wouldn't be removed, or the few as possible, if any removal is necessary. On the south side of 17th Street, from 4th to 9th, most, most of these blocks have sidewalks, and we're in favor of.
Have the full specs, so that in the fall, if we get the approval today, but what we want to do is preserve those trees as much as we can. So, what you see in those illustrations are to prepare the recommended capital improvements to apply for federal transit administrative funding, providing for conflicts, providing for sufferability, and providing for an effective date.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Do you have a quick comment to make?
So what you see in those illustrations are to prepare the recommended capital improvements to apply for federal transit administrative funding, providing for conflicts, providing for sufferability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
I'm Vice Mayor Glassman. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Do you have a quick comment to make? About, was concerned about trees being sacrificed on this project too, but that's not.
Please share the same sensibility of trees and the prefer preservation as you have in CR4.
Right.
Yes.
I will. I don't think that's the case for this one, but I will.
If need be, so I'll introduce that.
If need be, Ben, can you just tie a yellow ribbon around the old oak tree?
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you.
You get the. Okay.
You introduce CR4.
Introduced.
It's CR5, excuse me.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and authorizing execution of a State of Florida Department of Transportation District 4 Landscape Maintenance Memorandum of Agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for Installation and Maintenance of Landscape Improvements within Installation and Maintenance of Landscape Improvements within the right-of-way of State Road 5, and then an assumption of liability and hold heartless agreement with PAWACQCO Holdings 5 LLC and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals.
Yes, and CR5 is now approved. Thank you, everybody, for your patience on this. Moving on to motions. This is M1, a motion approving an event agreement and request for music exemption for the Catch Sport Fishing Championships in District 4. Someone like to move the item?
Move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals.
Yes, and M1's approved. M2, motion approving an event agreement with request for music exemption and related road closure for the Spring May Block Party, also in District 4.
No, now, we corrected that to District 2.
Oh, I'm sorry, District 2.
Yes.
I think, I think this is the one I thought was in 2, and Greg, in pre-agenda.
We told you wrong.
Oh, it is in District 2?
It is in District 2.
I know I'd get a thing for that.
Sorry about that.
Steve, I'm sorry.
That's okay. West of the railroad tracks.
I know, but I thought it was gonna be.
Do you want to move the item?
Actually, I have a few questions and comments about this.
Okay, go ahead.
If that's okay.
Yes, it's okay.
Thank you. So I don't know who, who's the best person to speak to, Greg?
There's Carl and.
Carl, okay.
Yeah.
So here's some concerns. You know, we've been working on, for a while now, revitalization of this area, the Hemershi Street area. Years ago, there was an association of business owners, and it was very active, and it was a very important part of that entertainment district. That no longer is the case, there's no association, whatever. So my first question is, because I'm not aware of a group there that's active, so who is this downtown Hemershi Village Association? Because we don't have any group like that, that I'm aware of, that we've been working with in the area. So that's why I'm just curious as to what that is, because we try to identify a group that used to be part of the entertainment district, but that's no longer the case.
I'm gonna ask Anthony Fajardo if he could follow up with that question with Luisa to determine if that is a group that is registered with us as an association.
We have a gentleman here who looks like he wants to speak.
Hey, how you doing? Thank you for listening, everybody. We started a downtown Hemershi Village Association about a year ago. Myself, I'm one of the owners of the den downtown Fort Lauderdale, and Ian is the other co-president from the original Fat Cats. So after COVID and everything, the whole association fell apart, so we're trying to do our best to get some people back downtown, which has been an absolute struggle. So just trying to put together any kind of type of events and drive some business downtown is where we're at.
No, thank you for that. So I just want to make sure, though, that the city is aware of this association, because, you know, as I said, we've been working for a while now with putting together with DSD, we've had the charrettes, we've had the workshops, we're trying to do a whole revitalization of the area. So is this going to be a recognized association, or is this just something that some people have done on their own, or?
This was reinstated by Gina from Riverwalk helped me reinstate this association. So I'm pretty sure everything was done correctly. It's not like something we just threw together.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we're on the same page here. There's just a little bit of a disconnect, so I just want to make sure that that is what's happening here, because that's good to know, and I wish you all the best, and I hope that we're able to promote that even more. Maybe, is Gina here? She was here earlier in the day, but maybe not anymore. Okay, so just a couple of questions while you're there. If you look at your application, on page 4 of 6, which is our exhibit 2, there are so many places where, I don't know what it says, company name, it's just got like NTSTA, space, 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 ILL, space, 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 ANDL, under tents or canopies, 4, space, NTSI, onsite contact names, ARAOU, phone number 424. I just don't know what this application.
It's in code, it's in code.
Is this a code? I'm having a hard time reading the application. I don't, I can't figure it out.
Anthony, or who would be, or Carl?
Carl, Carl, can you speak on the application? Carl, you assist.
Yeah, all that red that you see on there with the hieroglyphics, that's not me. With the SI, the R, that's not me. Everything is in black, is myself, with my initials is YD, but everything else that's in red is not myself.
So, Carl?
But we are doing just tents, we're doing tents, outside bars for participating bars, they'll have extension of premises. It's kind of something we're trying to keep, you know, doing on a regular basis, but whatever we gotta do to get this right.
I think it's great. How many people right now are part of this downtown Hemershi Village Association?
It's gonna be eight bars, eight restaurants and bars total.
Eight?
Yeah. The other two are not.
Carl, can you explain to me why the application is so incomplete and all these lines, it's just sort of like gibberish?
Good evening, Vice Mayor. I'll need to get with our group, because I'm not sure why it's missing that, but I'll get with our team and we can discuss it.
Okay.
Commissioner, from our webpage, it is not a registered neighborhood association. However, I believe Linda was able to research yesterday, or the day during agenda review, and she saw that that was an entity that was subscribed with DBPR. Linda, do you remember or recall that? So Linda, if you recall, you gave some information about the Hemershi Village Association?
Downtown Hemershi Village Association. Yes, absolutely. I looked it up in SunBiz, and it was an active corporation. It was reinstated in 2023, so it's still active as of today.
When you say reinstated, when, what, does it go back?
It was closed down in 2021 for not paying their normal.
Their annual.
Annual fees, and they got reinstated and paid 22 and 23s last year.
With the state?
With the state.
Not with the city?
Not with the city, SunBiz.
Okay, so Chris, could I ask you a few questions? Because all of the work that we've been doing on the revitalization of Hemershi Street, all the charrettes we've had, the reports that you've had, when you've come to the commission, given us the reports, I just want to know if we're gonna be working with this group? Is there, is there some sort of coordination or communication, or is this the genesis of a new Hemershi Street Association that we're gonna be able to work with in conjunction with what we're trying to do on that corridor?
Yeah, so Vice Mayor, when we brought the report back to you on the Hemershi District project, one of the initiatives was to work with the owners and folks out in that area to form a group like this. So at the time, we did not know there was a group that was already formed or in the works, so I think with this application is when at least I became aware of it as well. So we would want to work with that group going forward to get them registered, but also to be part of the conversation in terms of what happens out there in the future.
Right, I think it's so important. So I would just urge you to definitely, you know, reach out to the city, let's all work together on this, because, you know, there's such great potential there. So I'm really happy to see that you've taken this initiative, and I think it was just a lack of communication, because no one knew what you were doing, and no one knew there was an association, and we've been, did you participate in any of the charrettes and workshops, I think, that we've had? You've been there, right? So just let us know, and I think that'll be so helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay, so thank you. Mayor, with that, I'm happy to move this forward.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck. If it moves to seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals.
Yes, and M2 is now approved. Moving on to M3, motion approving an event agreement and related road closure for a charity car show in District 1. Anyone have any questions? There being none, would someone like to move the item?
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Is this a car show for charity, or is this charity cars? Some of my cars are charity cases.
If you want to auction, I do them off, feel free.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals.
Yes, and M3 is now approved. M4, motion approving an agreement for the Warfield Park Improvement, Cigarus Corp., Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, but I have some comments, Mayor.
All right, it's been moved, and do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. It's moved and seconded, Commissioner, Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We had a discussion about this at my pre-agenda meeting last evening, and this has come up over time. So one of the key components of the Warfield Park improvements in the South Middle River neighborhood is the splash pad. So I'd like to ask Carl a couple of questions here, because an ongoing issue that we've had with splash pads in the city continues. I mean, for those of you that might be familiar, we have a big water feature splash pad feature at the Las Olas Ocean Side Park. Over the years since that park has opened, I have rarely seen that splash pad work and function the way it's supposed to. So I'm just concerned, I don't, I'm not an expert on the technology of these water features, these splash pads.
They just squirt up.
I understand, but obviously something's happening if they're not squirting up. Thank you for the explanation, Mayor, it's very helpful.
I'm just trying to help you out here.
Okay, it's very helpful, thank you.
I've been to events where they've worked, but you're saying not all of them work?
I would say that more often than not, the splash pad at the Las Olas Ocean Side Park does not work.
Is that right?
And if it does work, there's maybe one jet out of many that works, so it's not working as it was designed, let's put it that way. So here's my question. I just hate to see us keep doing these things where we, you know, we contract with folks, warranties expire, we have too many examples of this. I mean, so I'm just curious. Number one, what is the status of that splash pad in Las Olas Ocean Side Park? And has technology evolved to the point where if we spend this $1,200,000 and change in Warfield Park, that we're gonna have a different experience?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Carl Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. So the design for Warfield's playground splash pad is a standard one. The one that we have at the Loop is a lot more intricate. Yes, we have had some serious issues with its operation. It is functioning now. We do still have some ongoing.
Fully functioning?
So some of the features of it does not, still does not work.
Like what, the water?
So like, you can program some of it to kind of go in sync, but the actual premise of the splash pad works today. So in other words, we can't program it to do certain functions that it's dedicated to do.
Like the patterns, sometimes that they do the different.
Correct.
Okay.
There's some very sensitive computers and components, I mean, I don't want to get too technical, but there's components that, with the, some of the elements and kind of where the splash pad is located at, has some impacts to the computers. There's some tube, almost, I want to say 100 feet of tube that has to be replaced. And so we've met with various amount of vendors. You know, last week, we have it operational, it's operational today, but some of those features are limited. But for Warfield's design, it's not as intricate, and we don't have the same concerns as this one, because we do with the Loop.
So with the Loop, are we working on fixing all that? Is it, is there still a warranty for this stuff that's not working?
No, so there's also a compressor issue that, which is what, delayed it for the most part, because it had to be ordered and it was on back order. But the company that we have on contract now hasn't been the greatest, and so we've had to go and look at other avenues to repair it, to get it to the point where it is now. And we're still actively working to finalize those other areas, but we're working. So if you go there now, well, not now, because it's late, but tomorrow, you'll see it working.
Okay, well, I hope that we can get it to the point where it functions the way it was designed and gives us all of the features, because, you know, that park's not that old, so I mean, we should be able to, I think, just do better. Now, with regards to this splash pad in Warfield, I noticed that we did have to cut the scope of about $376,000 to bring this in line with the dollar amount that we're gonna spend. So my concern, when I go to the detail on page 1 of 2 of exhibit 4, which shows us the line-by-line spending for this park, mostly all of the cuts to the program to get to that $376,000 savings are involved with the splash pad. So do we have a comfort level that when we do things like getting rid of rectangular this and that, and removal of this, and install this, and relocate that, and we're gonna eliminate the splash pad safety surfacing, we're gonna eliminate the splash pad concrete base, things like this, and the others are all not related to the splash pad, they're like picnic tables and things like that. Do we have a comfort level that this is gonna function the way we want it to?
Yes, because those elements that you're speaking to really kind of dictate the size. So in other words, we shrunk it. And that's basically what you're reading there, is that the size of it is.
So the splash pad is just a little bit smaller than it was gonna originally be?
Correct.
Okay, great. So we'll keep an eye on it. Thank you, Carl, I really appreciate it, and I really hope that we are able to do something about the one of the Las Olas Ocean Side Park as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, with that, I'm happy.
I have a question. My question in regards to the splash pad that's at the Loop, it's not working properly, the software, is it affected by the elements, the saltwater?
Yeah, so that is what the vendor is saying, that part of the concerns is, is that it's the saltwater that's intruding the system. Because it's got, I want to say, a couple of different computers that it's working on, and it's operating for the programming of it, and that's what's impacting its functioning.
Okay. I have a question. I'm trying to work this. Do we need to do a study to see about not putting certain technology, or to determine if certain technology agrees with the beach? Because this is the second item that we're talking about that is malfunctioning because of the elements. We got the garage, and now the splash pad. Are there any others that hasn't come to the table yet?
Not that I'm aware of, but-
Well, lighting, lighting and the wave wall.
Well, let me just say this, with regard to this, this is what we're spending a million, three hundred thousand dollars for?
No, it's more than that.
So that's just a component of it, and there's other things that should be accompanying that. But, I will say that-
It's not in the exhibit.
Mayor, go to exhibit four. Go to exhibit four, page one of two, and you'll see the entire scope of the project.
I know what the bid tabulation is, but I'm looking at the final product. And the final product, exhibit six, shows this little triangle of things squirting out of the ground for a million, three hundred thousand dollars. And if we're spending money like that, this is a sin, this is ridiculous.
So the splash pad itself, once it was reduced, comes in at five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And-
Oh, a mere five hundred thousand?
Yes.
I mean, five hundred thousand is a lot of money, but, five hundred thousand, which is still over the two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars over the budget. But after redesign and negotiations, we ended up getting it at three seventy-three.
Yeah. But there are really a lot of line items, Mayor, if you look at that exhibit four.
I did look at the line items, but all those look like they're components of the, of this splash pad area.
Well, no, no, some of them are as upwards as, some of those are like seventy-five thousand for, uh-
And what?
And Mayor, real quick, our procurement chief just reminded me that those are conceptuals, those are not the final drawings.
That's okay if they're not the final drawing, but I'm looking at what the, what, what are we, what are we buying?
Well, there's playground shade structure, there's a lot of playground equipment besides this, there's a lot, there are a lot of things listed.
The million-dollar monkey bars again.
Well, there's seventy-one-
Apparently, that's the new going price, man.
Yeah, you, you with the monkey bars. You're always mentioning monkey bars. Okay, but seriously, there are a lot of other items here, again-
They were good enough for me, they could be good enough for them.
I guess. I, I want to, again, just dovetail on what Commissioner Beasley Pittman is saying, I agree with her, she's like, that's so right on. When we do these contracts, when we enter into these agreements with these companies, it's, it's hard for me to believe that, especially on, you know, on the barrier island, on the beach, environmental issues, saltwater, wind, those have got to be considered, I mean, how would we-
Well, this is not on the beach.
I understand, but I just wanted to, I'm just saying I'm-
Well, the point is well taken, I mean, obviously, environmental concerns should be paramount, because the wave wall's been, has been, has deteriorated twice, you know, and, you know, it seems to me that the saltwater impact and salt air definitely is going to degrade the system.
Right, and it's no secret that there's- You know, salt and wind and-
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
On the beach.
Wrecks my hair, too, so it's-
And then, and then also to add to that, if, if the malfunction with the Loop's splash pad would not be necessarily the issue with the, if there's an issue with the Warfield Park.
Warfield Park, right.
That was, that's how the question started, will it work? You know, when we experience the same malfunctions? So if we're talking about environmental, Warfield does not have that impact.
It has different impacts.
Right.
And there's also a usage change difference, too, because the one at the Loop will get quite significantly probably more use than the one at Warfield.
Okay. But I will tell you, Mayor, the neighbors, the neighborhood is very happy about this project, and excited, and pleased, and they really want to see this happen.
Yes, and then splash pads, that is now the number-one amenity and excitement at playgrounds. And if we're preparing for, like we said early, the next sixty years, we want to include items that will benefit and be what the community desires.
I guess with those oscillating lawn sprinklers are not the thing anymore.
No, no longer that, nor your monkey bars, so.
Mayor, Mayor, I would have loved to have seen your childhood, that's all I can say, I can't even-
It was the same thing.
I can't even imagine. Have a telephone with the cans and the string, did you enjoy that, too?
Before you go away, I actually do have a question. I, I noticed there was one response. For a project of this size, and, you know, given what's going on with all the parks that we've got going on citywide, I'm a little concerned about that. So, why one response from Cigarres on this particular project? And what does that mean for all the other parks' projects that we've got going forward? Because, Lord knows, there's a lot of them on the pipeline, so.
Commissioner Glenn Markle's Chief Programming Officer. Point well taken, as a matter of fact, as part of this process, we issued two addendums to extend, trying to entice competition. That didn't cut it, it just left us with Cigarres. One of the things that you will see as part of this year's budget is, is that we're making an effort, we are doing some outreach, we're getting out there, we're gonna get the word out there as far as the city of Fort Lauderdale, and how to submit bids, get them involved, get them comfortable. So hopefully, that's probably one of the major hurdles that we're experiencing, but point well taken, we did take a look at it, we monitor our bids, we tend to end up extending it. First time around, we saw a lack of competition, did it a second time, and we had to pretty much cut bait at, at a certain given point in time. What we did to salvage this actual bid is that we went into negotiation phase, because the ordinance allows for us to negotiate with a sole bidder.
With a single bidder, yeah.
And then what we did, we ended up renegotiating and re-scoping the work. And just, you know, for everyone's identification, there is, I think, a community center involved in this project, a community building, and there's renovations, extensive renovations taking place as part of the one point two million dollars, but point well taken.
Okay, well, and the reason I'm, I'm just kind of curious about that is, I know when I'm talking to developers, a lot of them are holding off on their projects right now, because interest rates and construction costs have just gotten to a point where the numbers no longer work for them, and so a lot of folks are pausing their projects, particularly on the commercial side, but also on the residential side. So I would think that a project like ours, where, you know, there's no interest rate risk involved or anything else, that it would be attractive for people in the construction industry right now to be able to have a client like the government who pays, and they don't have to finance it, so. All right, just something for us to keep an eye on, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Are these splash pads, this is like a proprietary technology? I mean, why are there so few responses, do you think?
I, I don't think it's just the splash pads, I think it's just above and beyond that. I think that overall, we're looking at a construction project, I'm sure that the general contractors subs out certain work, including maybe the splash pads, but I don't think it's proprietary, I think there's more than one. I think it's more overall the comfort and general feeling on garnering the, the competition that projects just like this one should, should deserve. And we're just not getting it right now, but we are doing some outreach out there.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, has, the item's been moved and seconded, if there are no more questions, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, M4 is now approved. If you're doing, Carl, if you, Carl, if you're doing improvements to the existing structure, please consider doing some sound-absorbing material in the Warfield gym, because when we have meetings in there, it's very echoey, and it's very hard to really conduct business. I know it's a gym for basketball and stuff like that, but it's a multipurpose center, too.
We'll do.
Thank you. I know that'll be another three hundred thousand, but. R1, Appointment of Board and Committee Members, Mr. Clerk, please call, please recite the names into the record.
Yes, for tonight's resolution, Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Antoinette Wright, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Marine Advisory Board, Barry Flanagan, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Northwest Progressive Flagler Heights Redevelopment Board, Sonia Burrows, nominated by Mayor Trentals, Ginny Basin, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Parks Recreation Beaches Board, Zilla Tarko, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Samantha Sisler, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Sustainability Advisory Board, Cameron Steagle, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, and we received one additional name after publishing for the Education Advisory Board, Felicia Newkirk, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, and that rounds it out.
Okay, are there any other modifications or additions? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
It's been introduced, please call the roll.
And Commissioner, that's as amended.
As amended.
Thank you. A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, Board and Committee Members as set forth in the exhibit attached here, too, and made apart hereof. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and the R1 is now approved. I want to thank all those people who have agreed to participate in these boards and committees, thank you for your commitment to our city. R2, Resolution declaring notice of intent to lease city-owned property located at 330 Southwest Second Street, Fort Lauderdale, commonly known as the New River Trading Post. Ken, you just are here for answering questions, okay? No one else has signed up to speak, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Any questions?
Yeah. This was presented to us, this is a, I mean, would Chris, who's, who's the lead on this? Chris, or who would be able to?
Actually, it's Angela Hughes, and she's available to answer any questions as well. Angela runs our real estate asset management.
Explain what this, this item is a little bit, I mean-
Absolutely.
It has a lease, and it's, that goes how long?
Yep, can do. Hi, Angela Salmon with the City Manager's Office. Commissioner, your question on this lease, this is a lease between us and New River Trading Post LLC. Their current lease right now is going to expire in February, 2058. The current leaseholder came to the city and asked that we bring this item forward, and by city charter, we put this item out to competitive bid. This item tonight is just a notice of intent, so there's no decision-making on it, it's to gauge the interest and to put a notice of intent out on the market if there's a desire.
Okay. What's the hurry?
Great question.
Twenty fifty-eight, is what every news?
February twenty fifty-eight.
Time flies.
That was my question.
I mean, it's being very proactive.
Yeah, I guess so. Well, it concerns me, because it ties us down, what happens if we want to redevelop the area? We're gonna be stuck with the lease that we'd have to buy out. And is there any particular reason why they're asking for the extension? Are they looking to redevelop it? Are they looking to do some sort of improvements on it that require, you know, a lease extension?
So, tonight, I believe Stephanie-
Ken, do you know anything about the genesis of this request?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ken Krasnow from Colliers. Yes, I think there's a general desire, I think, as the Vice Mayor talked about, with regards to the improvement in the Himmershey District, to look at options and alternatives for a long-term redevelopment that will invigorate the area and, and, you know, build on the plan that's in, that's in place. So the current lease is roughly, what, twenty-five years or so left? So, this has been a discussion, I think, that the developer, the leaseholder has had for a couple of years now. But, to really see what the market will tell us, we feel it's important to bring it out to the market and then see what the options are. So, that's really the, the item before you today, is really just to allow us to go to the market and then bring back the alternatives for your discussion.
Oh, so this is not in itself a lease extension?
No, 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 no.
Notice of intent.
This is just to go, this is just, we're literally just gonna go to the market and see, again, what some of the ideas and opportunities are with regards to improvements in Himmershey.
Well, how they're gonna build on it, but, but somebody already has the lease on it right now.
Right till twenty fifty-eight.
Right, so whatever comes back, it's-
Starting in tw- it would start in twenty fifty-eight. Yeah.
Ken, you're still intending just to make it a one-month solicitation out there? Because the CAM says bids will be due back by May sixteenth, so that's gonna still hold?
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions on this? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you want to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, declaring that certain land and improvements situated thereon, owned by the City of Fort Lauderdale, are not needed for governmental purposes, and declaring the intention of the City Commission to lease such land and improvements thereon pursuant to section eight point nine of the city charter, such lands located at 330 Southwest Second Street, known as New River Trading Post, located on land more particularly described below, release of requests for proposals requiring publication of notice as to when the City Commission will evaluate bids, repealing all resolutions or parts thereof in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and R2 is now approved. PH1, Public Hearing, Resolution approving the use of Parks Bond Land Acquisition allocations toward improvements to the Lauderdale Isle Landing. Any questions with regard to this? If there are none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Resolution's been introduced, please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a recommendation from the Parks Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board to transfer funds in the amount of two million, three hundred, sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars from the City of Fort Lauderdale Parks and Recreation's General Obligation Bonds, Land Acquisition Funds, assigned to District Four, and allocate said additional funds in a total amount of two million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, five, five hundred to finance park improvement projects at Lauderdale Isles Landing, formerly known as Riverland Woods Park pursuant to terms and conditions outlined in City of Fort Lauderdale Resolution Number eighteen dash two-six-one and twenty dash zero-eight, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and that item is now approved. PH2, Public Hearing, Resolution approving the transfer and use of Park Bond Land Acquisition allocations toward improvements for Carter Park. Anyone have any questions with regard to this? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
It's been introduced, please call the roll.
Oh, Mayor, we gotta close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Well, we didn't do it on the first one.
We didn't.
Yeah. Motion to close public hearing on the first one. All right, let's go back.
Let's go after.
Let's go back. Well, because we have different rules for different items, this, this was not a quasi-judicial issue, so. All right, let's go back to PH1. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing on PH1?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, so public hearings closed on PH1, do we, Mr. City Attorney, do we have to, we have to revote on PH1? Okay, who, who introduced the resolution?
Me, I'll revoke it.
Okay, so it's been introduced?
I'll reintroduce.
Please call the roll.
Do I need to read it back into the record, or just vote? Okay.
I know why you asked me.
No, 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 I was talking, I was talking to Tom. Commissioner Herbst?
I don't know, I may have to rethink my- Yes.
You do that.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and PH1 is now approved.
Thank you.
PH2, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Mayor, I have a question on this, just a math question.
Well, we're just closing public hearing.
Is that what we're doing now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I'm good. Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, so public hearing on PH2 is now closed, yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. When I'm looking at the CAM, it looks like we're going to transfer seven million, three hundred thousand dollars. But if you look at the next page in the CAM, page two of three, it says there's seven million, three hundred, sixty-nine thousand dollars remaining. So, I'm just questioning, is that just a math error, or are we just leaving sixty-nine thousand dollars to sit there by itself?
Sixty-nine thousand is on the table.
Yeah, that's an error on our part, it's seven, three, sixty-nine.
So it should be the full amount that's left over? So, page one of three should say, in the amount of seven million, three hundred, sixty-nine thousand?
Yes, sir.
Not seven million, three hundred?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you, I'm good now.
Okay. Would someone like to introduce the resolution as amended?
Introduce as amended.
Thank you. Thank you for catching that.
You're welcome.
Please call the roll. On PH2.
Okay. A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a recommendation from the Parks Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board to transfer funds in the amount of seven million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars from the City of Fort Lauderdale Parks and Recreation, General Obligation Bonds, Land Acquisition Funds, assigned to District Three, and two million dollars from the existing Park Impact Fees Fund, and allocate said additional funds in the total amount of nine million, three total amount of $9,369,000 to finance park improvement projects at Joseph C. Carter Park pursuant to the terms and conditions outlined in the City of Fort Lauderdale Resolution Numbers 18-261 and 20-08, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and PH2 is now approved. Moving on to ordinances of second reading. OSR1, this is second reading, a quasi-judicial ordinance, rezoning from residential single-family cluster dwellings, low, medium-density district, and Parks Recreation and Open Space District to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use West District. This is at 1409 West Sistrunk Boulevard. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the Commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any additional disclosures?
No additional disclosures.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None.
I have none. Vice Mayor?
None.
And Commissioner Sturman?
None.
Okay. One person has signed up to speak, but just for questions, where are you? There you are, just for questions, right? Yep, okay, so would someone like to move to close public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, a public hearing is now closed on OSR1, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
It's been introduced, please call the roll.
Mayor, this requires a unanimous vote.
I beg your pardon?
Unanimous vote on this hearing.
This has to be unanimous?
Mm-hmm. It has to be. Parks.
Oh, what is it worth to them?
I hope everybody's happy.
We're reversing the parks zoning.
That's weird. Okay.
All right, in ordinance amending Section 47-1.6b of the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale, schedule a revised compilation attached here, too, and by reference made a part thereof, so as to rezone from residential, single-family, cluster dwellings, low, medium-density district to Parks Recreation and Open Space District to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use West District, lots 39 through 48, inclusive Block 3, Lincoln Park, correct according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 5, Page 2, together with lots 1 through 8 less road right-of-way, lots 9 through 16 inclusive, and lots 42 through 50 inclusive, Block 2, Lincoln Park, corrected plat according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 5, Page 2, also together with that portion of the vacated Northwest 14th Way, west of Northwest 14th Avenue, and south of Northwest 7th Street, all said lands being the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, containing 84,520 square feet, or 1.9403 acres, more or less. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and OSR1 is now approved on second reading. OSR2, second reading, and ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Let's see, no one has signed up to speak, anyone have any questions with regard to OSR2? There being none, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida's Unified Land Development Regulations, more specifically amending Section 47-5.60d, Residential Office District, to replace a reference to R4 District with RMH60 District, providing for correction of squanders there, is providing for severability, providing for conflicts and repeal, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and OSR2 is now approved on second reading. Finally, OSR3, second reading, and ordinance amending the non-bargaining unit classification table of the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, by adding two new job classifications, and changing the pay grades of two job classifications. Anyone have any questions with regard to this?